December twenty fourteen. And with that, will we all rise please and read after me the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And City Planner, Mr. Petches, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Vice Chair Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner Ruhland.
Here.
And let it be written in the record that Chair Darden and Commissioner Eggleston are absent this evening.
Tonight, we have a one special order of business, a selection of a Design Review Subcommittee alternate. Due to the departure of Kathleen Ward, we need to select or consider selection of one member to serve as an alternate on the Design Review Subcommittee, which meets on the second and fourth Wednesday of each month at three PM in the Community Development Department Conference Room A. Do we have any discussions?
I was wondering if this could be put off until we have a full attendance of the meeting in case one of them would be nominated so they could accept the position or make an alternate nomination.
I agree, we've got a third of our group missing, so it'd be good to continue this item, I think, until our next meeting.
Michael, any comment on that or opinion? So we have a basically a position by several members of the Planning Commission that we table this, I guess would be the appropriate move until a meeting certain or the next scheduled noticed meeting of the Planning Commissions.
And we'll do that.
Okay. So it so moved or should we have a motion?
I'll move we continue this item until our next meeting on January fifth?
Seventh.
Is it fifth or the seventh?
Third.
Pardon me? Seven, until our meeting on January seventh.
And we have a second? Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
So it basically passes four zero that we'll table and continue it. Okay, till the seventh of this January. With that, we have some minutes to approve. Is there any discussion or an approval for the minutes from the study session of December third, twenty fourteen?
If there are no changes, I'll move we approve.
Second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Passes four zero. And now, minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of this Planning Commission regular meeting of December third, twenty fourteen. Are any changes or a discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes of the regular Planning Commission hearing of December third, two thousand fourteen.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero. Oral and written communication, members of the audience may address the Commission on Matters of Public Interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward onto the microphone, state your name and city of residence and make your presentations. Please limit your presentation to three minutes. And seeing no one coming forward, we'll close the oral and written communication portion of the agenda and go to the consent calendar. And with that, we have an item on our consent calendar tonight, which is the parking provision on Avenida de la Australia. It is on the consent, do we have any cards or do we have any reason to? Uh-huh. Okay. Do any is there a desire of anybody in the commission to pull it or do we just want to move it to? Have a motion to forward?
That I will move that we forward it to the council? Well, it's on the consent calendar, so we just we just adopt, I move that we adopt the consent calendar.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, that's a first.
Okay, now we'll open the public hearings, item eight. And the public hearing includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant, in this case, I guess the staff, not to exceed ten minutes, and public testimony. To facilitate the meeting for all attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentations to three minutes. Following closure of the public hearing, the Planning Commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss issues, and act upon a matter by motion. Item eight A, which is Municipal Code Amendments Title seventeen sixteen two, clarification and streamlining of processes by Planner, Planning Assistant Planner Wright, Christopher Wright. Mr. Wright, how are you tonight?
Well, I just want to make a note that we received a public speaker card, so I'm not sure if a member of the public wanted to speak first, so we don't get into.
Well, how long is your, I'm sorry, Chris, what's your presentation plan here? Are you going to kind of go line by line on this thing or page by page or?
No.
Why don't you do your presentation first and then what I'd suggest is?
We'll open the public.
Because this could be pretty long, let's open up the public screen so this gentleman doesn't have to sit here all night to make his comment, okay?
Okay, well, reorder the presentation slightly tonight and open the public hearing first. And with that, who's on the card? So Mr. Sean Danish, is that we? Would you please come forward if you'd like, and you have three minutes to talk on item eight A.
Good evening, folks. My name is Sean Danish, the owner of the property at fourteen thirty South El Camino Real in the city of San Clemente. My company had owned this property since two thousand eight. Shortly after, right around two thousand nine, we have gone through the City Planning Department, talked to a gentleman at a time named Larry Longnickel, and have gone over the project that we wanted to go ahead and put in that property, which used to be a mobile service station. After we have gotten all the information that we needed to have, we had gone and spent somewhere around fifty thousand dollars to do all the plans and engineering work. We had made us a medal back in two thousand nine and paid all the fees to the city, the check was cashed. Up to this date, we have not heard from anybody in the city planning or anywhere from the city. The only thing that we had received was a letter from the accounting department saying that there is about nineteen hundred dollars out of the thirty five hundred dollars that we had paid is left for us to pick up, which was never given to us. Now, putting that to the site, when we went back checking to see what had happened with the plans that we had submitted, we were told that the gentleman named Larry was no longer with the city and he should have never given us the information that he had. Therefore, that project is not going to be approved anyway, so we had pulled away with over fifty thousand dollars in expenses and not being able to develop that particular site. Since then, we have been going back and forth to the city, talking to the planning director, wanting to know what it is that we can do to get that site developed. We were promised all along that they were going to change the zoning for the property, which was approved, I believe, somewhere around eight to nine months ago, to mixed use and the floor ratio of one point five if it's going to be two different uses of the site. Shortly after, we have gone back to the engineering staff of ours and paid over sixty five thousand dollars this time to get the project approved, preliminary things, and wanting to go ahead and get it submitted. And when we called in to make an appointment to make submittal and talk to the city staff at the planning department, they told us that that decision was appealed, which was kind of hard for me to understand how it could be appealed when this thing was passed about eight months ago. After I made some sort of a investigation, I find out that because of the fact the council members and the planning commissioners were replaced back in November, they wanted to go ahead and bring all that, opening that whole can of worm again and go through the whole thing again. Therefore, he told me that he cannot, probably it's not a good idea to accept the application until you're all finished with this amendment that you're going to make to the zoning change again. So I'm here to see exactly what it is, after waiting eight for almost two thousand eight, six years, what it is that I can do to get this thing developed. We received letters from the city manager wanting to know what it is that we wanted to do to get this thing developed, but in the other hand, we're not getting any help from the from the city to proceed with the project and beautify the city.
I think your three minutes are up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. City, is this the City Attorney, do you have any comments on that?
I mean, I don't know the history of the property. I think maybe a good idea would just be for the commission to direct staff to look into the issue and maybe it would involve a phone call or meeting with Jim or the Director of Community Development and the member of the public here, and maybe they'll be able to have a conversation about where to go next. I just don't know the specifics of these facts.
I don't think any of the commissioners know the specifics on that either. We have never had a specific property brought forward to us, and I'm not quite sure what the status is, so I would direct City Planner to get hold of Mr. Danish and arrange a meeting with the Director of Community Development to resolve these issues.
That's fine, actually, I'm not aware of this situation. So, this news to me.
I know you're.
Longnick has been out of the city for quite a number of years.
About two thousand and nine, I think.
So, yeah, I was trying to find my card.
It's a gas station, fourteen thirty.
And you can give me a call and we can talk about it.
I think if our recording.
Yeah, we'll just read it now.
Okay. For the record, Commissioner Eggleston is absent tonight and dropped off this letter for me to read, and he wanted to read it, read into the record. I've distributed copies to the members of the commission and to the city planner. From G. Wayne Eggleston of three seventeen Cozador Lane, San Clemente. I would like to have this read at tonight's Planning Commission meeting and included in the minutes under Municipal Code Amendments Title seventeen sixteen and two, clarification and streamlining of processes. I would urge the Planning Commission to proceed with deliberation and utmost caution regarding this agenda item. With the recent announcement of the retirement at the community director level and other potential changes with staff, it becomes clear that the intent and wording of these changes will have significant impact upon the level of re-ue. While streaming or streamlining is a valid issue, what is lost in this process is the involvement of what we hold most dear in our Spanish village by the sea, and that is the public participation and public communication that has made our city very inclusive. Direct involvement by our citizens has contributed to making San Clemente a very desirable place to live. Let us not through this process destroy or impede direct citizen involvement through a streamlining process that takes away the very foundation of public participation and direct citizen input or loss of quality of life. There are a number of streaming, streamlining issues before you this evening that I will not go through each of them, but for three. One, historic preservation, staff waivers for minor repair and preservation of historic structures. Our history resources are very important and public participation is vital. Staff waivers for parking requirements should only be given if these waivers do not affect the available parking in the area. Section thirty-three allows for temporary outdoor display of one item without a temporary permit. This would be fine, except that new and existing business owners are not aware that only one display is permitted. Allowing this code change may in fact have the opposite effect for code enforcement time and effort when complaints are filed and the business owner was unaware of such a requirement. What concrete and verifiable steps will staff take to inform new existing business owners of this and banner regulations before a display is placed out by their doors? Will this be written into the code? There are many more issues. I would urge the commission to proceed with caution. Additionally, Commissioner Eggleston wanted an item four, which I've handwritten, is not on all of yours, also read, that whatever we do put in the code to inform city council and Planning Commission prior to the issuance of special activity permits. I think that was also discussed in the preceding meeting when I read the videotape. And Eileen, here's his copy with additional written comments for you. And with that, we'll close the public hearing and commence with the staff presentation.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. This is a follow-up to four meetings now, three study sessions and a meeting on November fifth, where we talked about several code changes that are meant to clarify the review process, to streamline the review of some minor procedures in which projects are minor, often have little to no public comment, and by streamlining, facilitate changes that improve quality of life or maintain it. And then lastly is to make review procedures consistent with federal law for changes to wireless antenna projects. So that's the scope of this project tonight. And to update you, to give you a brief update, so the last meeting, there was some, a proposal by staff to change staff waiver findings to require for approval of a waiver to meet the same findings as permits. And then also, so to, if you want to, like, for example, if you want to waive a minor architectural permit, you'd have to meet the minor architectural permit findings in order to allow waiver. That was the first thing that staff was proposing. The second thing was an additional finding that a project be found not to be of significant public concern. And there was some concern by the commission that that's too subjective, so staff's changed the approach for staff waivers and actually identified a list of types of projects that are more considered minor and merit a waiver. And so we can get into those details, I propose, later, but for now, I just want to give a just general idea of the sort of things we've done since the last meeting. And then also, there was some discussion over the study sessions to delay a number of streamlining items, and that was also mentioned the last meeting, and that has been done. The project significantly changed through the great input that we received by the commission. And so, this project is really limited to more minor types of projects, so I want to emphasize that. There's another thing to bring up regarding oversight, there are some concerns by Commissioner Brown regarding some previous proposals staff had to be able to call up waivers at the commission level. And staff did an analysis at the last meeting, provided a comparison of what that effect would have on timing for the appeals process. And so it's a matter of, staff didn't recommend any changes in terms of the code, but there can be things done to improve the amount, quality of information provided on waiver decisions, so that the city council and the public can make a decision on whether to appeal a decision. So, for example, posting waivers on the internet, we don't really do that now. Also, we could have a consent calendar portion of a meeting where waivers can be reviewed by the commission and then ask questions and comment on them so that the city planner can make informed decisions in the future. And there's some other code changes, some little tweaks I'm going to bring up in a little bit that would maybe comfort the.
For the record, I did review the video of the November fifth session since I was absent from that at the time. All two hours, in fact, I think you, the call-up discussion started at three hours and six minutes into this meeting and went to about three for another fifteen or twenty minutes. And so I did review that part of it, and the fact that there is no notification process, whatever, that some of the other call-up things you're going to discuss further. And so I was was concerned about it because I thought the call-up process would allow more issues to be deferred to you, but I guess you've obviously backed away from that on a timing basis. So with that, we'll just go proceed to Mr. Have you had a comment?
Question, Chris, for the public and my own benefit, are there any of the decisions that are changing that do not have the ability of being appealed by either the public or commissions?
No.
So everything can be appealed and that then would, the appeal process requires a public hearing and it would all be, is that correct?
Yes.
So the public would have an opportunity on all appealed items to have comment?
Yes.
Very good.
And members of the commission as citizens could file an appeal? There's a process for that, but yeah.
Thank you, Chris. And with that, proceed, and hopefully, you know, in the part of your presentation, you'll cover that, and the changes, iterations from five November. Thank you.
So, really, the most, most of these changes are really focused on clarifying the process. So I provided an example in my report, adding a new table that identifies the types of applications and design issues that often come up in design review, what the role of the Design Review Subcommittee is. There's no section in our code right now about the Design Review Subcommittee, which surprised me. So that's been added in here to clarify that and to formalize unwritten policies right now. Right now, the commission does have the ability to refer items to the Design Review Subcommittee, but it's been unwritten policy and just understood by staff that items are directly sent to the Design Review Subcommittee if it's a Planning Commission type of approval. So, any Planning Commission approval now, it just says it's required. So make it very clear for the public, it makes it clear what level of review is needed to ensure projects are meeting the level of public concern that's typical for a project. So, other than that, I can talk a little bit about waivers, if you want to go through the types of projects that I identified in here, and then I can address Commissioner Eggleston's comments, and then after that, I do have some little typos and things that I want to bring up to you to raise the record.
We can go that route, and as the commission eventually, when we get a track change, I'd like to do a very brief page turn on the track changes and just make sure we're all on the same page. Thank you.
And also, if any of you have, you know, any hot topic items that you noticed as you reviewed it, that would be nice to maybe give Chris a heads up on so we can discuss them.
I think I called you, Chris, on a couple of things where we just referred to the wrong section that needs to be kind of rippled throughout on some of the peel stuff. And then, one area that caught my mind that I didn't see, I don't think on the five November, I don't recall being discussed in the study sessions, was a thing on condos, condo map review, which is now listed back in the back, it struck out entirely from us. And I don't remember that being discussed. Maybe that was in the five November video, but I didn't catch it. So that's one thing that I'd give you a heads up on, that back in Municipal Code, when you started defining what we do, that's a strikeout. So you're eliminating condo review from the Planning Commission entirely, I guess. So eventually, you know, when we get to that, be ready to discuss your rationale. Anything else from the other?
Did you have any questions, comments about the staff waiver list of projects that I had? There's one that Commissioner Eggleston had a comment about, so I'll address that in a moment. Any other comments, questions about that topic, the list of staff waivers and our approach to staff waivers? That was discussed a lot all these sessions, so I'm sure I'm understanding, I'm understanding.
Mm-hmm.
I try to really, it's challenging to account for all types of minor projects.
Yeah, no.
So, so this was carefully worded to try to give a sense to the commission of what staff considers minor and then also provide at least what we can do today, so that there's an item in there to ensure that the types of decisions we can make today are.
I guess we could state for the record and for the public tonight, that this is like, we had, what, four study sessions on this?
Yes.
Before this, or three study sessions, and then this one formal five November effort that went for, what, two, two and a half hours, I think. So there's been a lot of time to plow this ground extensively. So, for the public, I just want to make that comment for the record. So with that, you want to cover Commissioner Eagles and the tables and some other issues that Chris will proceed.
Sure. Commissioner Eggleston had a comment regarding the first type of project that we identified, and it's for staff waivers, so minor repair and preservation of historic resources and landmarks. And it's read as minor exterior repairs and preservation measures that improve the historical integrity of historic resources and.
Which page are you reading from on the report?
This is page five, the second part, yeah. So, right now, if you were to take a look at our current findings for staff waivers, it just says that changes that cannot significantly alter the visual appearance of a structure. And then the changes have to be consistent with the Secretary of Interior standards for historic preservation. Okay. That would include projects often are roof material changes, where they have to change the mortar packing amount, like the thickness and the randomness of the mortar pack, you're not going to make it exactly how it was, it's a change. That's really minor, it's not changing things and they're trying to maintain the building, that's a minor repair. There was an example given to the commission several study sessions ago, where someone illegally removed a window on the side of a building, and they want to put it back. This would allow them to do that without having to go through a public hearing process. So it's, one of the things that you'll notice in the code changes is I changed the wording of what the purpose of waivers are. And it really, let me read that. So I think it really identifies the, of what we're trying to strive for here. So, for eligible projects, the city planner may waive minor architectural permits and minor culture heritage permits. The purpose of staff waivers is to shorten the review process of minor projects that maintain or improve quality of life, that are clearly consistent with the general plan and city design guidelines, and that meet required findings for permits waived. The intent of this provision is to facilitate and incentivize minor projects that are encouraged by city goals and policies.
I like that a lot. I think it explains well what we want it for and that it's actually incentivizing, for instance, the improvement of historic properties, so that people don't have to go through a lot of, you know, effort and cost just to, you know, say fix the roof. I guess the one question I would have is, I just want to make sure that if someone wants to appeal one of these waivers, you know, what's the scenario for them to do that? Are they looking at the ZA minutes, and then they see the ZA minutes, and they have a certain period of time to appeal and it comes before planning, or what is that? Or what is that, that process and is it laid out anywhere?
Well, all our records of waivers are posted in a binder in our office, which isn't that visible. People would have to come in and look at the binder to know what's going on. So, one, one idea that we staff had to respond to some of the comments that we got from the commission is to scan the waiver decisions that we have and not only put them in the packets to the commission that the public would get because they're posted on the internet, but then to scan the waivers and post them on the internet. So, people were to go through, we have a way to query types of projects in the city. If you were to do a query staff waiver, you would be able to find them and you could open PDF files of them. So, that'd be a way to make it a little bit more transparent what we're doing. And then, also, not only that, but that would probably be the best way, I'm thinking, that we can make it a little bit more transparent than what we've done.
And if, say, someone from the Historic Society is, you know, looking at these regularly to, you know, see if there's anything that the Historical Society wants to chime in on, you know, they might see something that they are interested in appealing. How would they do that and do we have those instructions up there anywhere?
We do. They're in the code. It's a standard appeal process where it would be a, there's a $500 fee for any member of the public wishing to appeal a decision. And there's a form that you would submit to the city clerk.
So, yeah, that's interesting because right now, in a public hearing, which is more expensive for the city, people can come and address and express their objections for free, right?
Yes.
Now, we're saying that if they want to do that and they have an issue with it, it's going to cost them $500.
No, that's, that's how it is right now.
That's how it is right now.
It's existing process.
But they'd be appealing a public meeting rather than just a staff decision.
Well, no, but what Jim's pointing out is there's a public hearing, so there's the opportunity to come up and speak your opinion.
And do it for free. That's what I'm saying.
Now, just keep in mind that these are really minor things that are, you know, from years of experience, I know the Historical, you know, Society isn't going to have a problem with because we're tech. I can see it as what you mentioned, and I was shaking my head, yes, Jim. You know, if someone comes in and goes, "I want to do this thing to our building," and you know, we can go, "Well, that's not very historic oriented and that'll require you to go to the zoning administrator or the planning commission to do it that way." But if you do it this way, where you actually restore the building and put in wood windows that replace the old wood windows exactly the same, we can waive that. So, that's, now that's an incentive for the applicant to rethink how they're doing it so that it's more historically minded. So, I don't see this as something that's really going to be Wayne's concern. I understand it because I think he thinks it's for bigger things. But they're really specifically to address good preservation techniques. They should be rewarded for a streamlined process.
I agree.
And what we could do too, I think that would help, is, you know, already the Historical Society has put us on notice. Anything historic oriented, we notify them of. And on these waivers, we could specifically, you know, send whoever, you know, right now it's Larry that's our contact for these kinds of things.
Very good.
Send it to whoever their representative is that's concerned so that they're, get a constant stream and they can, you know, raise a red flag if they see anything that we might have missed or did inappropriately.
What I'd like to see, and Jim chime in, could we get as DRSC, since we're basically kind of the protector of historic issues right now, all staff waivers in our packet, each meeting that occurred between meetings, just copy and put them in there, just as informational. And then, if the public had any concerns, the Historic Society's got our ear. And if there's something they want to appeal, we can call it up then and there would be no fee. Is that correct?
Well, I do want to respond.
Staff waivers are generally put in the book.
I'm getting a sense that there's a concern about the fee.
It's, I think if you want a minor exception type, type of the decision, then maybe the fee ought to be a little bit more minor myself.
Will it call it up?
Well, I'll defer to the city attorney on that.
Well, the only thing I was going to mention is that the DRSC is an advisory committee. It doesn't take final action on items. So, appealing it, appealing a staff waiver to DRSC doesn't seem consistent with the purposes of it.
Well, no, but it gives us the eye before it gets to commission level to say, "Yeah, this should go to the commission."
I guess if that were the case, I would just suggest that if there is going to be an appeal mechanism, it be in a form of a report to the planning commission, which would then decide if it wants a full hearing.
Why do we review any historical issue at design review subcommittee? That's the case.
There isn't a problem of putting the waivers in your packet.
Yeah, it's not an official thing. It's just giving us a heads up.
My concern is creating another, you know, another loop. You know, we've been trying to do these waivers in a way that there is no appeal, you know, the call-up type of thing.
Well, it's a check and balance just at staff. That's the only, the only purpose for it.
And we have zoning administrator notes in our binders tonight. Sometimes they, they used to be staff waiver.
Yeah, usually we put the waivers in.
Yeah.
But it's, it's more of a.
Tonight, there happens to be.
But the checks and balances in the sense that, you know, if we're doing something that we're waiving, that we, our commissions or the councils or, you know, other decision-makers feel is inappropriate, there's a way of you getting back to us and going, "Hey, no, that's not, that's not what we want to see." You know, you shouldn't be putting vinyl windows in historic homes. But first of all, we're not, we're not doing that, but.
The only reason I was saying is if it wasn't a staff waiver, it would go to DRSC.
Yes, that's the idea behind the waivers. You'll see in my, the code, waivers do not require design review. Minor architectural permits and minor culture heritage permits do require design review if they don't meet findings. So, that was really well thought out to try to, well, design review is required for almost every development project. It's only the very minor things. And then, this is considered even more minor that design review is not needed. And I, I really took the commission's concerns to heart about this oversight topic. And I think that there's one thing that we're, we're proposing that would really change things. It might not seem like a big change, but it is. So, I can.
Would it be an overburden if the members of DRSC requested that you just email, just like you do the Historic Society, the waivers? Just put us on the same list you send to the Historic.
I have no problem with sending the, you know, the waiver notice or list to everybody and having it even a little bit more detailed.
That's all, that's all I'm looking for. I just want a heads up so I don't.
If it's a concern that you don't feel that you're confident enough that it should be waived is what it sounds like to me. A waiver is a waiver. It's not like, it's not something we want to create an appeal process for. If something warrants that kind of a concern, then it shouldn't be a waiver at all.
So, I'd think what Chris has laid out here is fairly well thought out. I think we've been through three study sessions and a formal session on this. And that, you know, to add an email heads up to you, people would be fine. I don't think, what we have here tonight.
That's all I'm looking for.
Is, I'm just concerned about the size of the fine that somebody has a $500 is probably a bit.
Because if Cliff's not here and Jim's not here in ten years and this comes through and they get a little crazy with their waivers, I want to make sure whoever's in.
And I think it's good for whoever, me or whoever my predecessors, to get that kind of feedback, I think we'd want to hear it.
Yeah.
So, I don't think it's a bad thing. I'd rather have it than not have it.
And my initial issue in kind of, you know, bringing it up is I, I think that these changes are great. I think, I think it's in the right direction. We're saving the city money. We're saving people money. We're streamlining the process. It's all good. But we're also taking something right now that people have public input to and saying, and saying, "Well, if you want public input, it's going to cost you the $500, you know, waiver." Now, you know, I will agree with you 100%. We almost never hear anything from anyone on these minor things. You know, people don't, you know, come and bang the fist on the podium over, you know, brown windows versus, you know, light brown windows. So, I, I think what you said is, it kind of, you know, set off a light in my head that if it's, if it's something that you would do a waiver on, it's not something that has enough question or, or it wouldn't be as controversial enough to really warrant a review process anyway. So, you know, while, you know, I worry that we limit that, that public process, but I think given how little public input there is anyway to it right now and the fact that we're putting in essentially safeguards and a process to say, this is, you know, if we think it's at all appealable or someone might want to appeal, then there's enough public interest in it that it wouldn't warrant a waiver. You can't warrant a waiver on it. So, I'm, I'm more comfortable after the, after the conversation with it. I guess maybe one more question is, can the city waive an appeal fee? If someone says, "I want to appeal," and we look at it and say, "Well, gee, actually, maybe we shouldn't have waived it," can the city say, you know, forget the $500?
Only the city council can waive any fees.
Only the city council?
The city, the city council can do that only.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with the waiver process and we need to move this process along here and get into the track changes here, but as you formatted it out, and I, does it need to be written into the code that waivers will be, you know, emailed or there's some audit trail to be published somewhere?
No, that's, that's an administrative thing.
Okay.
And actually, I would even point out that that could evolve. The commission and.
We just don't want to.
Someone could say, "I don't need that."
Well, we just don't want the tribal knowledge to be lost to, like Bart says, 10 years from now, everybody, you know, have changed, like Long Neck or Left and all that, you know.
Well, we can just do it as a staff direction for now. I would be comfortable with that.
All right, let's go. We'll take with that and we'll proceed onward then.
I'd like to respond to the fee concern that I found from being here a while that most of the time when a member of the public versus an applicant wants to fee, appeal a project, they will call their city council member. They will ask their city council member to call up the item and the council member does not pay a fee. They can call up the item. Some cities require anybody to pay the fee. That's one thing that's different about our process.
This is a true statement.
So, that's, and that's probably frankly, the, the way that a waiver would be appealed. And when I mentioned how one change that would be big that we're proposing is that there would be a consent part of a commission meeting that it would be all on consent. And if the commission saw a waiver they had concerns about, then they could call it up. It would be on video and they could, on it, and then the council would see it on, or the public would see that video and they could, their council member. So, that, that's, that's a significant change than how it is now.
Okay, let's move on then.
There is a concern of Wayne said staff waivers for parking requirements. We're not proposing any waivers of parking requirements. It's more rewording things to be a little clearer in how to find them. Number three is allows for temporary outdoor display of one item without a temporary permit. And then, I want to comment that we conferred with our code enforcement staff, this isn't something that's being enforced right now. Business owners don't think to go and get a temporary use permit or they don't even make an effort to, to go out and put a display item. Because then, technically speaking, every day, they would need to come into the city the way that this is worded. Every day, they would need a temporary use permit. And I think it's like $70 to display an item outdoors. So, it's not being enforced now. And when I consulted with code enforcement, the idea behind this change was to really reflect that, but then also to allow them to focus on other things. So, when they're driving down the street, they're not focusing on, did they get a permit? It's one less thing for them to think about. It's more, do they have two items? Do they have three items? And then, they can talk to that business owner if they see a problem. So, that was the idea behind it.
I'm comfortable with that rationale. He had a fourth item, which I, he called me back on it, and the recording secretary has it in her copy. I handed it to her. Eileen, would you hand that to Chris and have him, it's got the handwritten there. He was concerned about special permits, I think it was, and that.
Oh, activity.
Activity permits about could city council and planning commission be informed when these certain waivers are approved? I've noticed he also mentioned that in the tape, videotape on the 5th of November when I read the thing. So, I, he called me on that, so that's the only copy where he wanted that. Is there a place where we could process that we could accommodate that? That apparently there was some permit downtown that the noise and holidaying was involved. Reading the tape where, I guess their permit went till nine o'clock and finally the police shut them down at 10:30 at night there on El South Elcom in New Yale, is the way it read on the tape. And so, I was wondering, he's wondering, or I'm wondering or asking, is there an area in this change tonight where those, that type of a process could be accommodated within the code?
It's not any code change that's being proposed or considered. It's, that would be more of an administrative thing, like do we post it on the internet? Do we eep onto the design review subcommittee, that, that sort of thing?
Wayne, it's similar to what you were asking about notification of the waivers. So, what Wayne is asking for is for us to notify planning commission of when we issue SAPs.
And so, is that a burdensome effort on your part or, I mean, you look on the code? You're going to be getting an email of about, you know, 25 beach parties a week, but.
Yeah, I don't know if that's a, I don't see where that would be very burdensome. If, do we, do we coalesce those now? I don't know if we do or don't.
I don't think so.
It'd be a little bit of work, but you know.
Well, wouldn't it be your advantage to coalesce them and have them in some database or some binder somewhere so that you have an idea what you approved? I'm not quite familiar.
I don't know if I've ever felt the need as a planning commissioner to see all the, you know, special activity permits that are issued every week. But if you've got those somewhere, maybe if there's just a link in the regular stuff that we have or a link on the website or something like, that people could look at if they want to jump in to get that rather than going through the trouble of sending them out every week or something like that.
I propose that, like the other idea, we scan it, post it on our permitting system and then you can look it up.
I think that would be a.
And that's probably the quickest way that someone could get the information versus putting it in the packet.
I would agree with that. Commissioner Eagleson would be comfortable with that, that he could go to the website and in fact hit some link and he could see everything that you've approved.
And if I could just make a small technical recommendation, we scan a lot of documents. We, we have them electronically. We print them out. We scan them so that now they're a different, they're electronic document, but now they're a picture of the document. It's supposed to be a searchable document. Whenever possible, if you could just, you know, go and print it as a PDF, I think it's a much more, it's actually a smaller document that way too, much smaller. That's, it's also searchable and it's selectable and people can highlight stuff. So, whenever, we can do that whenever possible. That would, I think, be a little higher customer service for people. Does that make sense, what I, what I requested?
So, I think we've got Commissioner Eagleson's concern for it. We'll cover Chris to get back on track. Thank you for going through that.
Sure.
So, where do we want to go from track changes and start working or what's your next proposal here?
I think I'd like to address your, your items that you brought up.
Okay.
That you called me about. So, one of Commissioner Brown's comments is related to a section reference that I copy and pasted several times and it's wrong.
Okay.
So, it's a reference to a new section that is being proposed and it's, if you go to attachment one, attachment two, sorry, attachment to the zoning code changes and you go to page eight. Page eight, okay. Page eight, section four at the bottom is a new section that's being proposed to consolidate, streamline, simplify the wording, kind of like Jim Hare's idea. You put general requirements in one place. So, when you have general requirements, did everybody find it okay? Page eight zoning amendments.
The city initiated changes of revocation of approved applications, 1712175?
Yes. So, that, that section, it's all about, right now, there's all this like cross-linking between different sections. It's one of those comments that Jim Hare made that you have to really try to find things and, and they're not standardized, so you have to really compare. to really try to find things, and, and they're not standardized, so you have to really compare how this differs in this, and it gets really complicated in places. So this is an effort to put general procedures that apply to every type of permit in one place, make it easy for the public to find. But this section right here, you notice it's 17 dot 12 dot 175, and several parts of the, the code changes, I put 17 dot 16 not 12, so-
So when I went to cross-references, that was HPPA. And I think, I think as I looked through this thing, it probably rippled through maybe 20 times, or 15, or, it's all the way through, and so that's when I called Chris on it, that it didn't make sense.
So for the record, I'm going to give you the page numbers, so you don't need to, so page 16, so for the minutes, page, page 16. No, just page, page 16 is where I made this, this typo. Page 24, page 28, page 31, page 36, page 48, B, 8, 60, 62, 66, 71, and 74. And then let's also put, and similar changes, just in case I messed one place. Okay, so now I'll go to the condominium issue.
Okay, so I'm sorry, can you go over exactly what the changes are?
Okay, in each one of these sections that I, pages I mentioned, there's a section I, modifications and/or revocations initiated by the city. And in there, there's a section reference, and that should be corrected to be 17 dot 12 dot 175.
Okay.
The other issue is condominiums, and right now, actually, I think it was roughly about a year ago, an ordinance was drafted and ultimately adopted with commission input to streamline condominium maps. So that's subdivisions limited to subdividing how buildings are. So you're just, it's an apartment building, and you're making a condominium building. That's, that's it. And there's, I've gone to the council meetings and presented three of these in like four minutes. There's no public comment, no one's there, the city council never made any comments. It's just, I'm, they're really, if, if you look at the findings and the technical issues related to those, it's pretty clear it either meets it or it doesn't. And so, in, it was about a year ago, streamlined the process so that no longer do you have to go to the planning commission, the city council. And it made it where the zoning administrator can approve four or fewer units, and the planning commission can approve five or more units. It's, in our experience, there's, first it's rare that there's five or more units, but when we've processed these at the ZA level, there's been no comment, and it seems to work really well.
The other thing is that when there is five or more units, you review it. You're reviewing this for the site plan design, the architectural design. Examples would be Surfers Row, the Aaron Nelson Lane project with Steve Smith that came in.
Arrenzo Lane.
So the, the details and everything that we particularly care about with, you know, maintaining our community character and quality of life and all that are addressed in the use permit review. And then what oftentimes, most times they'll do is they'll get that all approved first, and they'll go back and do their construction drawings, and then they'll come back with the map. In the map, there's really nothing to review for decision makers.
The only reason I brought this up is it's on attachment three, where we go back and we define designer review subcommittee, what the commission does and whatever. I just, it, the only reason it stuck out in my mind is I went back and looked, as we went through all these study sessions, I just pulled those study session notes, and I have a folder, and I went, and I just, it hadn't been discussed amongst us, I thought, and I didn't see it in the, on the 5 November videotape.
That's right.
That is, and Chris confirmed that that was a new item, so I brought it up tonight because this is something that none of us had really discussed before, and that's why I wanted to bring it out. I kind of concur with staff. We do, like Arrenzo Lane, the one we just saw here a month ago, you know, we've already previously reviewed, had public hearing testimony, the neighborhood came in, we reviewed the site plan, we viewed the architectural review, the design review had looked at it, overlooked Linda Lane down there. And so then ultimately, they came in with, once the map was in, and we probably approved that condo map, and five minutes or less, I didn't go, look at the video on, on 410 Arrenzo Lane. But I, I tend to concur with staff on, on that process. I mean, we stopped things going all the way to city council, but I just wanted to make sure we all discussed it, since it hadn't been discussed before, so that's where we're at. Does the city stay arms length from CCNRs, or do they have a review and approval process on CCNRs?
Our city attorney reviews the CCNRs.
Because that'll go along with the condo map.
Correct.
And that's, I think we've got plenty of review then of the, the condo maps.
I'm, I'm assuming that the, the condominium maps that we've approved, in my experience, that the, the conditions of approval, there are several items on the condo maps that are, and I'm, am I correct at that, those conditional uses will remain with you and the zoning administrator that, because there's about five or six, I think, specific items that cover the CCNRs and our current conditions of approval. Is that correct, Mr. City Assistant City Attorney?
Yeah, I believe that's correct. We, we do have a, a bunch of conditions related to that, and as Jim mentioned, city attorney's office always works with the developer and reviewing, and if there's any issues, then they won't get the sign off.
But for the record, those conditional, conditions of approval will remain in use with the, the effort at the zoning administrator level. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, good. So I think, I think we're all in concurrence with the change, I just wanted to make sure that, that we all had a chance to really discuss it, make sure where everybody's comfortable with it. Michael?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so, should I go through my?
Yeah.
Okay, so page seven of attachment two, zoning changes. I can show you these if you want.
Attachment two is what, red line?
Okay, there's two different, there's two different attachments with red lines. Attachment two are all the zoning changes. Attachment three are the other, other things. So whatever's in the zoning code, attachment two. So most of the things we're going to be talking about are attachment two. Page seven, what?
1260?
Sorry. Sorry. So there's some duplicate of text right there, duplicate text. If you, if you go in section, subsection A1, and there's ABC, we don't need subsection C or the little text after that, because there's subsection two underneath the exemption for time extensions. So it's just like extra text that I forgot to cut out, yeah. Any questions about that one?
Actually, I had a little note up on page five, if you don't mind going back. It's a whole big blue area here on your functions and duties, designer review subcommittee. And I looked down there, policies and guidelines are contained in various planning, such as the general plan design guidelines, specific plans, and policy loading, and zoning ordinance. And it doesn't mention the, the LCP. Would that be appropriate to consider that in there for completeness? It just stuck out that it wasn't mentioned, and then within there is a land implementation plan, which is a local cultural plan. I don't, I just throw that out for discussion briefly.
I think, well, you guys might have something better to say than I do, but I, in the DRC, DRSC, we tend not to focus on, or try not to focus too much on land use issues. We try to focus on design issues, because here is where we focus on the land use issues. And I'm just wondering if the LCP is not so much a design document. These other documents are design guidelines, or have some kind of design guidelines in them.
A zoning ordinance is a design guideline, I guess it is, with the land and maps, but I mean, it's mentioned general plan, design guidelines, specific plans, and zoning ordinance, everything but-
We haven't seen-
LCP.
We haven't seen the LCP, so I, like, I'm more familiar with these other documents, but I'm imagining that there's probably not design guidelines in an LCP.
We ought not put something in that we don't have adopted. So as part of the LCP process, we should be adding those kinds of things.
We have LUPs adopted, just not an LIP.
And I think you could put the LUP, the coastal LUP, if you really felt that was important.
I just, I wanted to throw that out.
Good comment.
You're the professional, I just wanted to make sure everything else is mentioned. And we have part-
When the LCP is adopted in whole, it probably will have some relevance to the designer review subcommittee, some aspect of it, mostly.
Site, site plan review.
Yeah.
Okay, you want to hold it for now, but keep it as a placeholder, or?
I, I think we could just put, cut out "and" and put "and coastal land use plan."
Okay.
It's fine.
All right.
That exists now.
This, this list isn't exclusive. I mean, it just lists a few of the documents.
It's about as exclusive as, I guess what I've mentioned.
If there are other documents that contain policies and guidelines, they would be reviewed as part of the process, even if they're not listed, but we can include that too, if, if, yeah.
Okay, I just, now, enough to document that, and then we'll get, get back to where you're at. I'm sorry I interrupted you. Appreciate, appreciate your patience.
Page, okay, did that one? Page 24. So subsection I, it's that text related to city revocations of permits, revocation, sorry. And in that paragraph I, the last sentence should say, "For antennas on city property, a conditional use permit also may be revoked." So the word "also" should be added after a conditional use permit.
Just out of curiosity, we, what if, what if they're on private property? We can't, if somebody needs a CUP to put up an antenna on private property, we can't revoke that?
No, that's, that's not true. It's just, this section applies to on city property.
Okay.
And then actually, while I see it, I'm trying to get rid of as many of this title as possible, because it's just, it's unnecessary. So section, subsections G and H, it says, "Of this title at the end of each sentence." I'd like to get rid of that.
Chris, can I go back to this last sentence? You just put the "also" and says, it reads in total demeanor, "For antennas on city properties, a conditional use permit may also be revoked or modified if other findings can be met pursuant to section 1728, O7OG?"
Yes.
That's what you want to say?
Yes.
So you can revoke it if other findings can be met?
Yes, because it says it's right here, refer to section, which, 17 dot 12 dot 175 for related procedures and required findings. And then it's just, "For antennas on city property, there's some other findings." And if you can't meet one of the, or if you can meet one of those as well, then you can revoke it. So I'm just-
I mean, are we getting into brass tacks here? They've got a lease with the city, and that lease is saying you must meet all of this, so it's more like they're going to be violating their lease, and that's the way to revoke it.
Yeah, I mean, in situations where there's an antenna on city property, there's two ways for the city to act. It could be through a regulatory means, by revoking the CUP, or there could be implications of the lease, so we're covered in two different ways. Correct.
Okay, but you're comfortable with the wording you wanted to add, the word "also" to that sentence, the way it reads?
Yes, a conditional use permit may also be revoked. Any more questions about that one?
Your change.
On page 46.
For the record, there are changes in every page we're going through, that we're flipping through here.
So page 46, the last paragraph, designer review, about designer review. And for, when you might recall, when you do an addition to a non-conforming residence, and the addition, or that house is less than 1,400 square feet, you can expand it more than 50%, but it also requires designer review. So that should be said in here, because designer review is required for those projects. So, so it should say, okay, the second sentence in that, so where it says, "For minor architectural permits and minor culture heritage permits, applications shall be reviewed by the designer review subcommittee if the city planner determines proposals do not meet required findings." And then, "Or," this is what I'm proposing to add, "or if a project involves a 50% or greater expansion of a single-family dwelling with less than 1,400 square feet of floor area." That was just for consistency, because there's other code to not have one of those broken links.
I need to back you up a page or two to page 41 or 42.
1400 square feet of, of area, with less than 1,400 square feet.
Could you go back to page 40, 41, please, Chris? New residential projects, five or more units, paragraph, or-
Area.
And I wrote a note here, refer to subsection 1716100C5 for exempt projects. And I had a question on by five, I think when I went back, and it's repeated on 42 and 43, because it didn't map to five, when I really looked in the zoning ordinance, so I just tagged that for accuracy, because you repeated it three times, but I think when I looked in my Petch's book, it didn't map to five. And I, by that time, I gave up with online. Without that time, I, I don't want to, I don't want to bog us down in some minutia, but it might be important there.
It's there. I'm a little confused, which, what's your concern?
Yeah. Residential projects, firework, other essential projects, last column, per subject, 1716100C5. 425, pushing forward to that, same equivalent, page 42, 43, back to the actual, didn't have.
It's a new section.
Page 39.
You go to page 39.
That's it.
Just out of curiosity-
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
Our study session this morning, or this evening, will he also be reviewing, basically doing the same thing again in his effort, in checking the consistency of reference numbers?
That's what I do with him. I'm, I'm his editor.
Okay, I apologize. I apologize, I guess I got confused with the other change. Thank you, Ajit.
Page 50, subsection B. Okay, so I had mentioned earlier, we had talked actually several times about the ability Okay, so I had mentioned earlier, we had talked actually several times about the ability to bump up things. So the sentence, I, I did that in other parts of the code, I didn't do it here, and I'd like to add that. So it'd say, "The city planner has the discretion to refer applications to the zoning administrator for review and final action."
This is under paragraph B authority?
Yes.
Page fifty.
Last sentence of it, yeah, that'd be the last sentence. Yes.
Does this conflict with what we just talked about, about city council, will you ever call them up?
No, it's, this is consistent with, if you look at the other types of city planner decisions, the way I structured it is, they can refer the next level up to the zoning administrator, okay? The zoning administrator can refer to the planning commission. So it's, it's like, it's very consistent with everything else I did there. But maybe I'm a misunderstanding.
Well, didn't somebody, we had the discussion earlier, that the public could go to their city council member, and the city council could call up a waiver? But this is a bump up by the planner or the city planner. This is a- This is saying that they're the final authority on all waivers. You want to change that?
No, the idea behind this is, a staff waiver is for waiving a minor architectural permit and a minor cultural heritage permit. And those are reviewed by the zoning administrator. So they're waiving a permit that goes to the zoning administrator. So if they don't think that it's, it's something that should be waived, then they basically are saying, "I can issue a waiver for this, go to the zoning administrator." So if it's, if it's not minor enough for a waiver, they have a way out, and they can send it to this zoning administrator, and it needs a permit.
So you want to take section seventeen sixteen ten, "Staff waivers of minor architectural permits and minor architectural heritage permits," and under authority, put in their language, this is kind of the standard language we have, of being able to bump it up to the zoning administrator?
Yes.
Under authority.
Part it says, subject to the appeal.
Subject to review appeal process.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I'm comfortable, I think that's a good catch. And it gives the guy at the counter-
Well, it gives me the ability, when I think a project's, you know, got some extraordinary circumstance, that I have the authority to send it to the Z A.
Yeah, I've, no, I-
And it gives the Z A the authority to bump it up to you.
Right, I think I'm comfortable with that, yeah. The buck stops here, or the council, I think that's appropriate. Michael, you say, are you comfortable with it? Okay. Good catch, thank you, Chris.
Page seventy-eight. Very bottom of the page. That, that text's relationship to the primary building, and there's a graphic after that on the next page. It's not, it's not necessary. It's unnecessary, because the other changes that are being proposed allow for walls on non-residential lots to be reviewed through a, the architectural process, the architectural review process of the materials, the height, all the various things that are talked about here. That would be reviewed through a standard process that we already have. So it seems unnecessary to have another requirement when, maybe in some instances, it's not, it's not needed to have a fence on a non-residential lot that's only three and a half feet. You know, maybe it's a bad thing. There are times maybe you want screening of something like a crash enclosure or something, you know, or a little area that you want screened more than others. So it's, it's limiting where it doesn't, to, because there's already a process that gives the zoning administrator or the planning commission to consider stuff like this. Does that make sense?
I'm also concerned, yeah, I, I take that out, but also the fact that a building setback, way beyond the setback, when this is the same, the setback, the same building was beginning, building property, or, or, without the intent.
I think the idea, I see what you're saying, between the street and the primary building. I just think it's not necessary. Sure, and we also have design guidelines that encourage buildings to be close to the street. So, so, you know, you might have one building, I, you could, I could think of probably situations if I tried.
What you're saying-
It just doesn't make sense.
What you're saying is, by eliminating this, we actually deconflict the code. So it's a good catch. So are we in agreement then, that paragraph three on page seventy-eight is out? Okay, thanks, Chris, good catch.
Sure. And page eighty-six, the, the text at the bottom can be striked, because it's, and there's another sentence below it that's the same, just the way things were copied.
Repeat that again, Chris.
Page eighty-six, D four, at the bottom, can be striked, because on the next page, there's text like it. That's, that's it for me. That's all.
This whole discussion on wireless then does bring us in confinement, because wireless became very controversial this summer with the, up in Forester Ranch, and the custom, and the call-up by the council. So this puts us all in sync now with federal guidelines, I guess, so that we, although, I mean, the battles will continue, I guess, but- But, so there was quite a lengthy discussion on this, I know, looking at the video. So everybody's, everybody's in sync with the wireless antennas, then?
And also, I recommend that the council allow staff to work with the city attorney to identify any, like, other little suggestion on that. There's something pretty common that's-
Well, there's, I mean, there's just multiple issues. There's, so much of this is dictated by what the F C C says.
I mean, across the board on the entire thing.
Oh, okay, I thought you were talking about this, yeah. We're still going to have to probably make another pass at this, yeah.
Yeah, when you go to the city council, that staff can work with the city attorney to identify any little things, like, just identify and fix them.
Also, you have another, another city council requirement to kind of harmonize this whole wireless situation, then? Is that what you're saying to us?
No, I'm just saying that there's these items that I brought to your attention. I might miss one, so it gives us, before we go to the city council, that the planning commission is-
Typically, the idea would be that if we need to change things to improve clarity, or make it more legally defensible, then, you know, we're asking you to give us the leeway to do that?
It's just like a side recommendation, you know? It's not anywhere in here, it's, no, this would be, for example, the planning commission moves, you know, approves whatever resolution, finding da-da-da, and also recommends that staff be able to work with the city attorney to address any clerical, technical issues, and similar issues, something like that. Fine tuning, fine tuning.
Legal.
I want to say, come to you, legal issues.
So you will craft some words that we can ultimately read into the, to the motion, and is that what you're suggesting?
Sure, let's do that right now.
Or, or maybe the city attorney can, will approve or concur with what you write? Upper commissioners, is there anything else in this review that we've gone through that, you know, Chris, or Jim, or anybody has not covered that you desire to discuss in your review of this effort after some twenty hours of discussion, or whatever it added up to be?
I had a couple things to, questions about, maybe clarifications, but I didn't know if, I kind of just was looking at the summary tables, and I didn't know if you wanted to go through the summary tables in order, or I could just hit the high points.
Up front, the first summary table?
Yeah, yeah, I didn't know if that was-
We can certainly do that.
But, or, like I said, I just have a few things that I wanted to ask about with that. So I'd be happy to do that, or if you want to go through them in order, that's fine.
Are we all clear, since I missed the last meeting, on outdoor dining, and alcohol, and non-alcohol, and public land, and non-public land, and the alley? Everybody is in good concert with that?
That was, that was actually one of my questions, particularly with the public land, because it's been a little while since our last meeting. I wanted to make sure I kind of had straight why we were doing that. I think it's, particularly to bring it into alignment with private lands, but I just, maybe you could, that was, since that was one of the questions I had, maybe you just want to address, you know, why we're doing that, and what that's about. I think I can do that.
Most of it is to clarify the code, because there's two sections, and most of the code there between the two sections is similar.
Yeah, we merge it, basically.
It's unnecessary to have two completely different sections, when most of the code is the same. And so one of the ideas is to make the code easier to read, to merge them together, and, and just make it clear there are certain things that are different about public property, and then specify those.
Okay.
And then, there, there is one thing, though, that we're recommending to go beyond that, and we didn't talk about it in prior meetings. Going through this code, staff found some texts that, because it's worded in such a confusing manner, you found something in really analyzing the code, that you cannot have live entertainment or alcohol on, in outdoor dining areas on public property.
Right.
It's prohibited. But yeah, we have the golf course clubhouse with outdoor dining with alcohol. So it's inconsistent with some property uses in the city.
So, is it's like the Footloose rule, that if you're on public property, no, no music, no dancing?
Well, I think we have a special agreement with the Fisherman's, I think there's, but, but I agree, I think Mike is right.
So you're saying-
There's a process already to review those issues, so you're just treating it just like any other outdoor dining.
All alcohol-related issues type of things come to us anyway, and so we beat through the normal review process.
And we're, so we're treating that just like we would treat a private institution?
Basically.
And does that count for, I don't know, like, you know, say there's a surf competition at the beach, or something like that? We treat that, we treat that the same way, where they're serving alcohol, or have music? That, so that's all handled like a private, like-
No.
Not there.
Oh, right, okay.
But if you're, like, let's say there is a special event, I'd just, like, the Fiesta, maybe?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, in that case, the Parks Department, they have a special event permit, and they're supposed to go through that on their property, on public property.
Yeah, there's a special that permit for, for the Fiesta, and Fourth of July, and all that. Okay, no, I, I think we're consistent there.
Other than that, there's, it's just clarifications.
One, one review, just to bring myself up to speed, I looked through the note there, in the video, there is no controversy, there's some issue on parking requirements. Shared parking will not result in inadequate parking. Everybody was fairly comfortable with all the parking issues, page one hundred and eight, I think it is. There was a little statement back there, "We're okay, the city planner determines the parking studies are adequate." I think you simplified that quite a bit, that you don't have to do, you do similar to what we just did in the, in the recent parking study, like, just do it on Thursdays and Saturdays, and I think-
That was my change, because the current code made no sense at all, it wasn't even, what parking consultants do is best practices. So I just made some clarification, gave you a little more detail.
I'm comfortable with it, I just wanted to make sure for the public record, and the people at home, that it's okay. Because I'm getting caught up here.
I just want to actually just flashback a little bit to, I just had mentioned there were no other changes in outdoor dining. What's other one, what's one other one where, right now, the community development director has to approve outdoor dining areas with less than sixteen seats on private property with no alcohol and entertainment? This would just make it where the city planner does it, so it's still staff level. Just, the city planner really is like the custodian, you know, responsible person for-
He bumped that down a level, then? I think I remember.
Well, it's, it's, it's all staff level, it's really not-
Up to sixteen?
It's not really streamlining, so I didn't identify it that way, it's, it's-
So went and moved from zoning administrator to city planner?
No, community development director to city planner, so it's just which staff person needs to approve it. Didn't change the process, really.
Okay.
So it's-
That would be the equivalent of a C U P?
No, it's just, someone comes in with, someone comes in with an outdoor dining area, let's say they're having two chairs outside, you can't see it anywhere. The city planner could approve that.
A permit is-
Right now, community development director can approve without any permit.
Oh, without any permit?
Yeah. Building permit, you know, so you probably have, like, sometimes you have maybe a guardrail or something, but- So it's not-
That's a new discipline, so it's not to be-
Yeah.
Chris is just changing the authority, who raises, you hear all of it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Most things are reviewed by city planner, so I'm just trying to follow that consistency, yes.
I did an issue, maybe you can clarify, page one eleven, one twelve, which is the, these retaining wall finish grade and guardrail open, and then I went back into current zoning, tried to find them, and I couldn't. I guess seventeen twenty-four one eighty, the whole definition section? I think the, I think the-
Oh, yeah, sure.
There really are in this book somewhere that I couldn't find, since I gave up on the website.
Sure.
I, just to ma, I don't want to, I remember we worked definition so hard in the general plan, but-
So what are you, I'm sorry, what are you-
It said guardrail open, there's, you did some deletions, and then, and I just went to look for it in the chapter seventeen twenty-four one eighty, and I just-
Yeah, I, I completely rewrote that. So I struck, what I did was, I striked that text, because right now, for example, if you want to have a metal picket that is one and a half inches square, not one inch square, you go through an eight-week process. Zoning administrator, public hearing process to do that.
Okay, good, good catch, but I was just going to make sure you get it in the definition thing in the back. Couldn't find it in the manual.
Okay. Now, in this section, it, it, instead of just saying open guardrail, which is a little confusing, it's, it's clarified a little bit, and it gives a little bit more discretion to the city planner, maybe, if it's in fact, and also, it also, if you want, I can show you that. Do you want me to show you what I did? So it's page eighty-four, page eighty-four. I forgot to, I forgot to tell you about one other one. But we can talk about guardrails if you want, but see that subsection B?
Mm-hmm.
Right there? That's my reworking of guardrails being open and up.
Okay.
Look at that.
Yeah, I've already read that, and I was okay with that.
Okay.
I just want to make sure you get it, now, definition's okay. Whatever else, you had another remembrance here you wanted to go through?
Yeah, I did. So on the next page, eighty-five, I recommend that we strike the subsection, the I, 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 the second paragraph from the top.
Page eighty-five.
Because it's, it's, it's for consistency with my other code changes, it's not needed anymore. It's the same topic that we're talking about, guardrails and being open and stuff.
So this is, this is the text, "A deviation from the defined structural materials specified for guardrails." You want to eliminate that paragraph?
Yeah, because it's not, it's unnecessary now. Yeah, because it's not, it's unnecessary now, because of the text that we were just describing about the city planner being able to review it if it's two inches versus one and a half inches square. It's just, I forgot to take it out to be consistent with everything else. A lot of, a lot of code.
I don't know why we, why aren't, why aren't we just saying the definition of a guardrail, and the guardrail open meets the building code definition?
Like you did on page 84, on 112, we're, we're writing something new that.
It's because the building code doesn't address visual impacts, that's more of a land use design type of thing.
But I'm not sure that its definition does either.
Well, that doesn't, page 84 does. Page 84, there's a brand-new paragraph, that's all, all new and. Yes, that, that is to eliminate this eight-week process, this rigid, or guardrails. So, I'm just saying, the other text I'm talking about now in 85 isn't needed because of that one I'm showing you now.
Four inches apart from the current.
Yeah, I think.
A sphere can't pass through it of four inches. Actually, I think they've reduced it a little bit.
So, you might want to say, you might not, because the code's all changed, but now I think that's specific.
Yeah.
I'll just say.
Yeah, I think spacing shall meet.
Limited to glass and pickets or something.
Yeah, I don't think you want to necessarily quote the spacing of it, because that's going to be governed by the code.
Okay, so say limited to glass or have metal or wood pickets, period.
Thank you.
Is that good?
So, you eliminate anything that are four inches apart, all which is in the end of the sentence?
Sorry, I brought up correct.
I don't want a baby's head to get stuck in there.
That's it. And then, on that, so if we could go back to page 85 now?
Yep.
So, that "I, I, I, I" isn't needed anymore, because we just did that. And then, the "I, I, I", the one above that, it's really, it's worded very, it's very wordy. So, I propose that we change it a little bit, a staff member brought this up to me. So, an increase in the permitted height of a retaining wall to eight feet six inches, not located within the front yard setback, street side yard setback, and rear yard setback, parentheses, for through lots, parentheses, period. So, because if you look at the one above that, it's four front yards and street side yards.
So, you add the backyard. Uh, it's building code. Building code has a definition of guardrail, and, you know, why we create new definitions? Oh, and you couldn't find what's amended, got you. Should be right there. Right there. Oh, it might be under walls retaining. Out of alphabetical order.
I just want to make sure we picked up the results.
All right, so, oh, I'll just repeat the whole thing. An increase in the permitted height of.
Oh, well, be clear on what section you're in.
Okay, 85, the paragraph at the very top.
I have.
Yeah. An increase in the permitted height of a retaining wall to eight feet six inches, not located within the front yard setback, comma, street side yard setback, comma, and rear yard setback, parentheses, for through lots, parentheses, period. Text right below that, the next section, the one right below, a deviation from the defined structural materials, you delete that.
They also delete the rest of the sentence there?
Self now, what?
Well, you, you started your insert way after retaining wall, if you're going to delete the interior rear yard setback areas, the interior.
Yeah, I, what I read was, what would be there? So, okay, so I'll tell you what I, so I'd strike out, when it says increase in the permitted height of retaining wall, then I would strike out in the interior and rear yard setback areas, and in the interior of a lot, but outside setback areas. And I, then I would add, after eight feet six inches, I would insert not located within the front yard setback, comma, street yards setback, side yard setback, and rear yard setback, parentheses, for, for through lots, parentheses, period. Does that make sense?
No. Yeah, it does, but. I, I think you may need to go back and review this one a little bit, because, what's eight foot six inches?
It's from finish grade, which is.
Put a planter in front of it? I think you need a better definition of where that eight foot six is measured from. Is it, is it a clear face, is it the amount is actually retaining? Or, if you have a, a 10-foot wall and you put a two-foot-high planter in front of it, do you measure from the planter up?
What do you, what do you recommend, based on other cities you work in? What do you, what do you, what do you think works best?
Well, it's all a matter of what we're trying to accomplish. If we don't want the face of a wall to be a bare wall more than eight foot, that's what we should say. If we don't want the top of it to ever be more than eight foot six above the average finish grade of the lot, that's something else. I mean, we got to figure out why we came up with eight-six.
I think it's the visual impact of a span of wall.
That's what we should say.
It's not.
There should be no exposed face higher than eight foot six inches.
Excuse me, isn't it defined here back in the definition of retaining walls and walls from finish grade?
It's, it's defined under finish grade.
Yeah, on page 111, right? So, the height is from the finish grade.
But, I know, but what's the definition of the finish grade? I mean, there's, is it the finish grade right in front of the wall, or if you bermed up to it, is your finish grade?
Well, it says that. It says your finish grade means the level of the ground surface adjacent to a retaining wall above the footing. For purposes of measuring the height of a retaining wall, finish grade shall include concrete flatwork, earth berming, dirt, sod, or similar ground cover. A maximum of one foot above the elevation of the top of the footing is determined structurally necessary by the city engineer.
You know, I have to say that, well, I'm glad you brought this up. I have to say that this last part is really silly, because it's saying one foot above the footing. So, if I have a footing that's 10 feet below the ground, you're measuring the height from nine feet below the ground, which is ridiculous.
I think it needs to be cleaned up a little bit, and I would be willing to let staff do that after the fact, but I'm trying to get that all resolved right now.
I think you.
I think it needs clarification.
I think you just, just take out, I mean, tell me if you agree, but this says.
What page are you on, Chris?
This is 111, sorry.
Okay.
So, at the very bottom, where it says finish grade, the definition. So, you could take out where it says ground cover at the, towards the end of the paragraph, says dirt, sod, or similar ground cover. Put a period there, and then take out everything after that. It already says ground surface adjacent to a retaining wall above the footing.
So. So, I'm sorry, Chris, where do you want, what do you want to strike out again?
So, it says, it says, the second sentence, for purposes of measuring the height of a retaining wall, finish grade shall include concrete, flatwork, earth berming, dirt, sod, or similar ground cover, period, and then delete everything after that.
Elevation from a footing is.
Is irrelevant. It could be 10 feet.
I guess what we suggested.
Yeah, because I mean, if they're using caissons, the, where's the?
Yeah, let's look, let's, they gave us direction to work on this, the idea is that you don't want to have a exposed wall face more than eight foot six.
Okay.
It's an aesthetic issue.
I think we'll take that as.
So, you have factors and things in front of it, and I think we want to look at maybe defining what, what the planer, you know, what that could be? Because you don't want to have someone just taking a minor, little dirt piece like that to get away.
I just make it clear, and, okay, I think.
The intentions.
I think you have the direction from the commission to go clarify this in, or to definition.
Okay.
Okay, so, anything else, Chris, in this monumental effort you've been working on for so long? No, I think Commissioner Ruin. Okay, Commissioner Ruin, you'd like to go back to.
Yeah, I just, I got a couple things.
On where are we going?
Uh, let's go to bottom page 107. And 107. Yeah, and this talks about removing the references to internet cafes and such, they're kind of an anachronism, and it's, it certainly should be removed. But, when we had talked about this before, we had talked about maybe looking into, uh, places that offer wireless connections and having something in the ordinance, perhaps, to make sure that they're secure wireless connections to reduce high-tech crime.
Does the city want to go there?
You were given direction on that.
Sorry. I was just curious, does the city want to go there and try to protect people's internet connections?
I've never heard of that. I mean, it's, you're, you're starting potentially to get into commerce issues as well, which, I, I'm just not sure, I'm not exactly sure where to go on that one.
Well, I, I bring it up because, well, first of all, because it's kind of a rampant thing that's going on, a lot of places have unsecured wireless, and it's very, very easy to do, like, what they call man-in-the-middle attacks, where you're stealing information, you're, you know, you're literally just sitting there stealing their passwords, it's pretty amazing. But, I know in zoning ordinances, we do things that will help reduce the potential of crime. We might, you know, we've got, we talked about public art, and one of the reasons we do public art is to reduce the amount of graffiti, for instance, which is a crime. So, there are places around town that can become centers of one type of crime or another, depending on how the zoning ordinances are. So, that's why I brought this up, because any place that offers an unsecured wireless connection is potentially a place where, high potential, a place where this kind of crime can occur. So, that's why, that's why I brought it up, you know, kind of in the context of this, we don't need internet studios, but there's a lot of places that offer these wireless connections, and they offer them for, to make it a little bit easier on themselves, they offer them in an unsecure way, which, you know, these days, by the way, I never use an unsecured wireless connection, period, ever, because it's so easy to steal from you. So, so I, I thought, that's why I thought it might be something that we want the city to try.
I do remember you mentioning it when I ran the video from the five November meeting, but apparently, we didn't pursue, there was so much on the plate that it wasn't pursued by staff or looked into by anybody, so.
Just wonder if that's also a bigger policy issue that would be addressed in a future amendment to.
It may be, it's more than a cleanup item, so if we can, you know, put it in the, whatever we call it, parking lot or the drip pan, or. I think it's, I think it's a, I think it's an important thing to do, because people, they're on their computers all the time doing that, and, you know, I, for one, unfortunately, don't use any of those, because I know how easy it is to basically lose your bank account number.
I think it's worthy of, of putting it in the drip pan or in the.
Yeah, because I think it also needs a little bit more investigation, because it doesn't really feel like a land use issue so much. And so, we need to talk to the, you know, look at, with Ajit about, you know, whether we can legally do that or not, or if that, or maybe it belongs somewhere else in the municipal code, I don't know.
Part of the code, I think it's a good point.
But it is, I think it's a good point, for sure, so.
Mm-hmm.
We won't lose.
So, I, yeah, just make it a drip pan issue for, because it may be go, like you say, in some other part, some other part of the municipal code in the zoning ordinance, but anyway.
Yeah, I made a note of that for my, it's already in my.
Oh, great, you got it pinned in, all right, good.
You have a big one already.
The other issue I had, or question, was next page on 108, we're talking about downtown parking studies that I think organizations have to do. In the general plan, we talk about our circulation plans being assessed from non-peak times. So, in other words, we, we design our circulation systems according to the general plan policies for non-peak, because we've seen other cities that base it on the peak area, and they make a lot of sacrifices in that way. That's why it was put into the general plan. So, I wanted to make sure that this would be consistent with, with that, and if it's not, maybe we need to reference that policy or indicate that these studies need to be done during non, for non-peak times, or something that, that makes sure that we're in conformance with that general plan policy.
I don't think it's apples to apples, I don't think parking demand is measured the same way as traffic demand.
Well, it's part of circulation.
Because if you have, if you make, let's just say, we have a, a center, that the peak demand is at two o'clock every day on Thursday, every Thursday. So, if we design a parking lot for a non-peak time, and the city demands 20 cars, just for instance, and we decide, well, we're not going to do non-peak for that little center, and it only requires 10 the rest of the time, well, every Thursday, we're not going to have enough parking. So, I don't know if that's really, that's not the way that, that traffic engineering works. I mean, a parking, our parking consultants would do the analysis, determine parking. Although, I'm worried about having sees a park, see a parking for no reason, I mean, definitely, you know, I see the issue with, you know, a lot of department stores and things, you know, they do the peak seasonal thing, which is a little bit different than just the peak demand for the particular day of the week. So, I'd be concerned with trying to mesh that with something that really isn't apples to apples.
Well.
And it does give us, what it does here is it gives me kind of the discretion to kind of look at it to make sure the best practices are followed, but I don't think. Anyway, that's my opinion.
I think in the general plan, the intent of that wasn't necessarily to say that, you know, Thursday and two, it's the peak time, you know, and Tuesday at midnight is, is the, is the non-peak time, and we have to do it at Tuesday at midnight. It wasn't meant for that, it was meant more for, we don't want to create a circulation system, of which our parking is part of, for, and design it purely for the peak summer months. What we want to design it for is these non-peak times, so that, so it's more focused on the residents, and we don't have a lot of excess capacity during a lot of, you know, that we don't need during much of the year, and we don't make other sacrifices in mobile, in other areas of mobility in order to accommodate this one peak area. So, that, that's, so it's more about the seasonal thing, I think, as opposed to, you know, a particular time of day. And since this is part of our circulation system, I didn't want us to forget about it, you know, in that context.
I think the way that this is worded here doesn't really reference peak or non-peak at all. And there is, this, this right here is a requirement for a minor conditional use permit or a conditional use permit. And one of the findings for those permits is that project is consistent with the general plan, so. To cover, because in order to meet the findings for the permit, you have to be consistent with the policy that you're speaking on.
No, I understand.
So, I don't, I don't think it necessarily has to be worded in here unless you're concerned that it's going to be missed, or.
I'm not duplicating too many times.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I don't want to put in a lot of duplication, but I, I think it's, I think we, in some of the, you know, sort of unrelated circulation discussions that we've been having, I think we may have been, we may, we may not be including that policy in our, I worry that we may have not been including that policy in our conversation, so I just don't want it to be, you know, dropped out.
Did you, you mentioned this, Jim, I think, in the five November, no, you mentioned it during the parking study.
I think I mentioned it last time, we were, yeah, during the parking study, right.
Between then and now, did you go back and look at the general plan by any chance?
I, well, yeah, I double-checked the policy prior to that meeting, because I had a recollection of that. So, I checked, yeah, there is a policy that talks about.
Yeah, I remember that, in the general plan, is it circulation, or is it parking, or is it just overall?
It says circulation, that are, that are circulation, I can't remember if it says circulation or mobility, but.
Because that's street sizing, so to speak, more than, like Jim says, parking.
Well, it's the whole picture, when, when we. When, when we say mobility or circulation, it is the whole picture. And, you know, parking is part of the circulation puzzle, you know, along with pedestrian and bikes.
But what they're proposing here is very consistent from a parking study situation that we've had, when you look at the four or five Walker parking studies.
And this is basically just setting up the process and the evaluation procedure to do a parking analysis that might vary from the code. So, you know, whatever the parking generation demand is per the code, per office, retail, whatever, this gives a person an opportunity to say, hey, you know what, our uses, even though it says it's a retail, it's a certain kind of retail that really doesn't generate that kind of parking demand, and so they can go through with an analysis and, and potentially reduce their parking demand. Um, I just don't see the relationship you're talking to, talking about here. Doesn't have to do directly with circulation. The only time parking affects circulation is when you don't have enough. If you don't meet the 85 percentile in terms of, you know, occupancy, and if you're less than 85, uh, occupancy for, for, uh, on-street and 90% off-street, um, you're not affecting parking circulation, or, I mean, traffic circulation. If you're above those numbers, then you, that's the danger zone. It's, those were the related, but I, I don't see where, you know, this study directly relates to this off-peak idea for streets, because again, that, that idea was to try and not get, you know, of 1980s version of, of, a street design was, you know, build it as wide as you can to accommodate as many cars as possible.
I thought that general plan, that was a general plan, uh, issue, and it was a focus item, or it was an item in there, but it was more from a city perspective on how we design our circulation and party, not necessarily a business who's, is trying to come-
Well, I guess, I just don't see the consistency.
This is for a business.
But if you can point it out, maybe I understand it.
Yeah, I, I can understand maybe for a specific business. I'm looking at this and saying, well, parking studies, when are the studies done where we, we talk about, you know, what's the peak time, that sort of thing? And, you know, if we're not taking into account the non-peak time, or if we're only judging by, by the peak time, we may be running counter to the general plan. And I think the example you brought up is, is definitely an example of how that affects circulation. There's other ways too, like, you know, if we've got parking on the street, for instance, that, you know, you don't, now don't have room for bike paths, and if we're supposed to be, you know, multimodal and, you know, that sort of thing, that you, you might be taking away in that way.
What I think the point here, excuse me for interrupting, is, is this is for a business to try to come together to get a permit for parking. This is not a city to study, uh, of a geographical area, which includes the bike paths and bike parking and everything else. This is just for a business to come forward and say, yea, very for my use, uh, I, I can or cannot meet the requirements, and this is the study that they're trying to bound for, you know, the Rule and Widget Company to, to set up business on Del Mar, and not necessarily, I think, the total circulation of the block. I don't think the Rule and Widget Company is responsible for, you know, how many laps around the lot I do, you know? So I think this is okay.
I, I understand, it's, you know, I'm, I'm only kind of, you know, you know, let this go for now, but I do want to point out that when we talk about these things, that we're saying, you know, this is doing the park count every Tuesday and Saturday, and in every hour, Thursdays and Saturdays each week. Well, in the summertime, those numbers are going to be very different than in the wintertime, right? So wintertime is non-peak season, summertime is peak season. So it, it seems to me, depending on, you know, the applicant is sort of at the effect of the seasons in, in this particular thing, you know, because of that, that issue with peak season or non-peak season. So it's, you know, it does enter into it, at least in that respect, even for a small business, because we don't want to be unfettered businesses that are, have their applications come through in the summer.
We don't want to have, we don't want a business application in December, and say you got to wait till next August to do the traffic count either, so.
But-
So I think-
I'm not, I'm not saying they should, but-
You know, when is better the enemy of good enough, and I think this is a pretty reasonable approach.
And those are all the kinds of things that we would kind of think about when we're analyzing it, you know? So let's say tomorrow, someone comes in and wants to do this study, and it is, you know, depending on what it is, it could be, it could be the opposite of off-peak, it could be the seasonal Christmas thing, excuse it. We'd have to take those kinds of things into account when we look at it.
Okay, well-
So I agree with that. We would have to look at the seasonality and how does that really apply to the reality of maybe what we want to look at is the average use.
Mm-hmm.
And the way that this is worded, it gives the city planner discretion, because it says determines that parking studies are adequate, has authority to decide which parking analysis methods and counting is necessary to verify parking patterns.
Okay.
It's possible.
I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay.
Are there any other discussion items that table's staff wants to go through, everything?
Uh-
Discussion items that you need to add.
Two motions.
One, we need two motions?
And a recommendation. Or Steph and Jim will help you out.
We're going to have a general discussion.
Well, okay, we can open-
We were just talking about specifics.
Okay. You're right. I agree. I apologize. Uh, do we, are we ready for a general discussion on, on this? Michael, would you like, you have some items?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to start first by saying that, you know, I think this is a, a huge piece of work that you've accomplished, and it's, I think it, the spirit is good. The spirit is to streamline the, the, the building process in this city. It's been known for a long time that it's been hard to get a permit here. And I think we should do whatever we need to do to make, uh, citizens of this community to get a permit quicker, easier, more fast. And I think that what you're proposing here, you know, the, the amendments on the zoning is really giving you the ability to, to call low shots. And, and, you know, I agree with the whole spirit and the overall. I'd say my general, my general concern with this is the due diligence. If we were to pass all of this the way it is, I think that some of us have a feeling that there may be some issues of, of regret or second thoughts, and certainly issues of angst. You know, should we let that go away and go to, uh, planning, should that stay with the Planning Commission? And I haven't been through all of these other episodes, and so I don't share all of that angst, but I can certainly understand it. It seems to me that this, this is really a, a good, solid piece of work, but it would also seems to me that it would be appropriate to maybe have here a proviso that, one, the concerns about some of this coming to design review, at least having the cognizance of what's going on, if, if we're not going to review that anymore, it's going to go to staff level. At least that we know what's going on. And then the thing that seems appropriate to me is to let this run for a year and then measure it. Go back and say, okay, here's the things that staff approved, and let's, let's just analyze that. Let's, let's see if there was risk taken from the Planning Commission, because I think that's what we're talking about, you know? We're, we're a governing body here that wants to make sure that all the checks and balances are in place. And, you know, this, this is taking away a few of those, and it's doing some other things that I think are really admirable. So I'd like to support it, but, but, um, I'm thinking that some, some cross-check, some, some proviso that we give us something to measure this back maybe in a year, rather than, I was, when I first started this, I thought, well, we'd have to, three of these, each of these cases that are in here, you know, mining, minor, uh, site plans and things like that. But, you know, I think over a year, it'd be a really good thing to go back and see how this is. And then I think if, if we see weaknesses here or inconsistencies with what we think are appropriate, I think we can address it. But, you know, let this run. I'd let this be a triable, and let's, let's let it run, and, and let it take its course, and give us as much information about what you're doing, so we're at least cognizant of that. But I, I like it, and I would support it.
Comments from the other parts of the commission?
Yeah, I, uh, you know, I support it too. I always spent a lot of time on it. You spent far more time on it, you know, going through it. Um, you know, I agree, I think looking, taking a, a pause after a certain amount of time and, and, you know, making incremental improvements over time is a good thing. I think maybe we could just do that as staff direction, and then in a year, have a study session perhaps, and if we, in the discussions and the study sessions, if we decide more work needs to be done, or something like that, we can, we can maybe use that mechanism, and that might be a low-friction way to, you know, to address that. But I, I think that's a, that's a good idea. But yeah, and I think it's good to, it's good to remind ourselves too that, that not only is there some things here to try to streamline what the Planning Commission is doing, and we actually had sort of, sort of bigger ideas at first that we backed away from because we were afraid that we were taking, you know, taking too much from the Planning Commission. But there's just a lot of stuff in here that you've done that just cleans it up. I mean, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't change, you know, who does what, it just makes it a lot clearer for people. So for that reason alone, I think it's a, it'll be a, a real public service benefit. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm certainly supportive.
Um, I'm in support of it, and I, I feel, uh, I'm probably confident in all the changes because I'm confident in the staff. If times change in the future, like the idea, we always have the opportunity to change it and, uh, review it. But I would like a study session in a year. I think that's great. Uh, and I'm also in support of the zoning code changes as we amended and discussed them tonight.
Okay, my comments, I think I'd like to echo what Chairman Smith brought up about a, a review cycle, or, or let's get together a year after council adoption, or, and see, and get a heading check on it as a study session. Maybe a formal, formal agenda section. Uh, just so that the, the public knows. Because a, a study session seems to be, you know, it's more relaxed format, but, uh, I would consider more of an agenda. This is the people's business, and we want to make sure that, you know, they know how well it's working too. Uh, other than that, I, I think, Chris, you've done a great job. We've had, as usual, four or five efforts, just like the non-conformance chapter, because several years ago, of all the trench work you do, and I really admire you for all your detail work. Um, and for that, for, for the public, and the reason why I'm leaning more towards an agenda is, you know, is we had a study session tonight from Jim Hare, who's the contract with, is working with you on the rest of the zoning ordinance, which, and some site-specific plans, and, and a host of, of cleanup and making sure things match and merge and, and connect, and are in compliance with all the state laws that the general plan and the zoning ordinance have to jive. Uh, and it was a, an heart, I, an enlightening session. I was excited about it. I could see great things coming out of it. It's unfortunate that it was a study session in a way that the public couldn't view, because it was a very excellent session, and I think the product in a year is going to be exciting of your, the, your attempt to make the readability go from a two on a scale of 10 to eight, and I applaud that, and I think Mr. Hare's going to help us. And so that's why I would, would lean more towards an agendaized review, just so that the public can see what great things are coming, I think, coming out of the zoning, the changes that we're going to accomplish here, which was presented to us tonight without, unfortunately, you know, public view. So I, I think it's a great job. I support it. Good detail work, as usual. This is the first of many other sections coming our way, and, uh, so I, I would consider in a year, an agendaize section, just so the public can see what great work you've done. Anything else from the commission? With that, I'd entertain a motion, I suppose, and I think there's a recommendation, and there's an additional, uh, to, offering, I think, that the, the assistant city attorney has worked on for-
Yeah, so I was just going to note, there are two resolutions, so that could be done through two motions, and then Chris had mentioned a kind of a recommendation that staff work with the city attorney's office, and I just wrote this kind of quickly, and it could be a, a third motion, or however you want to do it, but it would be that, uh, you, you would recommend that staff work with the city's attorney, city attorney's office on any minor edits and revisions prior to the city council's review of the proposed amendments. So, just nice and simple. Um, and then with regard to, uh, coming back in a year, you know, whether or not it's a study session or part of the regular session, it's going to be agendaized, but, uh, maybe that would be just a, a fourth motion, uh, for the Planning Commission to make.
Okay. Would we need to do that as a motion, or is, uh, can we just direct staff to-
You can actually just direct staff. That's funny.
Okay.
I'll, I'll go ahead and make a, um, a motion on attachment to Resolution PC 14051, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California, recommending the city council adopt zoning amendment 14056 to clarify the application review process, streamline some permit processes while maintaining or enhancing quality of life, and make wireless antenna procedures consistent with federal law, uh, with the amendments that were discussed. Um, and Chris, you want to, do we need to read them out at this point?
You can just note, say that it's the amendments that were discussed during today's hearing.
The amendments that were discussed during the course of discussion.
Is there anyone for a second?
Second, sir.
Okay, you've got a minute. Mr. Smith, second this one? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero.
So I, I will then make this, uh, move that we adopt Resolution Number PC 14 dash 052, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California, recommending the city council adopt amendments to municipal code Title II and Title 16 to clarify the application review process and allow the zoning administrator approve tentative track maps for condominiums and condominium conversions.
And there is additional, any additional language then?
Did we have additional language for that? No, so that's it.
Okay. A second from anyone?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero.
And then, I guess, just a third. A third, it's really direction, but we could do it in the form of a motion, would be that the Planning Commission recommend that staff work with the city attorney's office on any minor edits and revisions prior to the city council's review of the proposed amendments.
Do I have a-
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ruin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero. And then there's a, a recommendation, uh, for a review by the Planning Commission at an agendaized session one year after adoption by the, by the city council. Any, do we need a second to that recommendation?
Let's recommend that the city planner, um, uh, provide a report and an analysis on the streamlining amendments and how they're doing, um, back to the, the Planning Commission in one ear. So that's a little bit more direction. We're, we're not going to just-
Okay.
-meet, we're going to tell, we're going to evaluate how it's working and-
And a report.
Well, I'd get better.
I'd get better, too.
I will, I will move that we direct staff to create the report as described by the city planner.
Have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Crandall. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero. And so that concludes, uh, old business section. Uh, there are new businesses, none, old business, none. Reports of commissioners and staff, uh, from the coastal advisory committee meeting earlier this month, we did agendaize and, and discuss, uh, a street sweeping issue that had been originally proposed to city council several years ago, uh, and, uh, with the new members with consensus, we voted to, um, request that the city manager, request of authorized staff time and attempt, and agendaize it to the city council for ultimate consideration, which is to expand our street sweeping ordinance to, in order to minimize, you know, runoff into the ocean from, from leaves and stuff that, with all the, uh, tinted pesticides and, and nitrites and fertilizers that have, you know, attached to the leaves. And so like, a rain, like we've had in the last week here, you'll see certain areas of our beach above and below the pier, and up by poach, you turn yellow, and so most poachy turn yellow, and so most of that's because of the rain runoff and the, and the grass and leaves that are in the, in the curbs that we can't get to. So that was taken care of, and then potentially, I think, in the January local coastal advisory committee meeting is the local coastal plan, is on the agenda for seven January to, by the city planner.
So long as all the, versus work the rest of that?
And I think our, the coastal advisory committee, Mary Van Vondreek from city staff is going to attempt to try to get that from you prior to the furlough break if possible, so we could, you know, the, the coastal advisory committee could read it over, at their leisure over the furlough before the, since the meeting comes, is a day after our next, next meeting in the first week of January. I'm assuming it would take a significant amount of reading, but that, she's going to attempt to arrange that with you if possible.
And we're nearly complete with the draft that we're submitting to the coastal commission, I think, next week, so we should have something, we can give you the document, the staff report might not be ready, but the actual document, and it'll also be available for public review that we'll post on the city website.
Is there any other reports from commissioners at all? Anything on the tentative future agendas from the city planner?
Well...
If not, I'll attend or entertain a, a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn to the study session to be held at 6:00 PM on January 7, 2015, Council Chambers of City Hall located 100 Avenue, CDO, San Clemente, California.
And before a second, happy holidays to everybody, and we'll see you next year, and I second the motion.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Happy holidays to everyone else, and Merry Christmas.